Mr. Supervisor, please call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster is not in attendance. Trustee Graham Hudek.
Evening.
The record reflect Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am present.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for motion to approve the agenda with a few minor changes.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the amended agenda as presented with the removal of the recognition R1 for public safety promotion. Also, item C, item G5 being moved to the consent calendar as item C2. Consider adoption of a resolution for approval of application for additional MERS service credit by employee. And item G10 being moved up to G0 and placed in front of G1. Consider approval of a budget amendment and contract for 2019 community needs assessment.
Good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Call for motion to approve the minutes of July 9, 2019 meeting.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes of the July 9, 2019 meeting.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now is the time in the agenda for the citizens' non-agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience this evening that would like to make comments? Please, Mike. And if you could, sir, state your name, address. Not required, but we like it.
Absolutely.
It's been to three minutes.
Always happy to say that. Michael Schultz, 44580 Dion Street. It's not a paved street. I get no benefit from the tax collection. My item tonight is, and it's a small item, and maybe you guys voted for it, maybe you didn't, but I consider it wrong. When I go to a grocery store and get through with my groceries, I pay them for the groceries and I'm done. I do not get to have, or have to pay an administration fee. So twice a year, you charge me an administration fee to pay my taxes. I don't think that's right. It puts, I know it puts a couple million bucks more on your budget, but I think it's wrong. And for whoever's going to be running next time, and they would vote to repeal that, they will have my vote. Thank you.
Sir, is there any additional public comment? Is there, Mr. Letty?
Letty, 6757 Brookshire in Canton Pickwick Village. I just wondering, are you going to approve the list for the 2020 projects tonight? That's not tonight?
We've got a study session coming up next week where we're going to go through the details, and then on August 27 will be the actual board action to approve.
Got pushed out?
What was covered? Yeah, everything's got pushed out.
Okay, you're not cashing the checks tomorrow either, then?
I can delay cashing those checks if you want me to, Jim.
Well, no, I'm just curious, if the dates were pushed out?
Right.
I thought it was approval tonight and cashing checks.
The dates were pushed out because of board trustees' calendars and making sure we had a full.
No, totally, no problem, yeah. I'm just not gonna, I'm not gonna stay if you're not doing the list, that's why I asked.
We're not doing the list tonight, but come to the study session next week.
Okay.
And we'll go through it in detail, and then the following week after that will be the board action, on the 27th. Yep. Have a good night. Mr. Statura, would you like to make any board comment? We're asking for public comment at this time, if anybody would like to make.
Regarding what?
Anything you'd like to, sir. Just, this part of the agenda is reserved for public comment.
Oh. You know, I value a public virtue.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. All right. Seeing no further public comment at this time, Treasurer Slavens, motion for the.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Once again, we will pay the bills. Thank you. Next item is consent calendar with the two items.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C1, the WTUA or Watuwa Annual Budget Approval, and item C2. Consider adoption of a resolution for approval of application for additional MERS service credit by an employee. Item, formerly item G5.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Good. Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Supervisor, I don't, I think that that's it for Watuwa for the evening, is, or was there?
No, we've got actually another item, G1.
We do. Perfect, because I just wanted to make sure we talk about that, so thank you.
Next up will be item G0, which is formerly G10. I believe that'd be one motion, Mike. Get back to, two motions, okay?
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following, I'm sorry. I move that the board adopt the following amended budget. Increase revenues to the miscellaneous revenue account fund in the amount of $10,000, and increase expenses to the professional and contractual services in the amount of $10,000.
Support.
In summary, Canton Leisure Services requesting approval to award a contract for the 2019 Community Needs Assessment and approve a collaborative agreement between Canton Public Library for the project. The Community Needs Assessment is conducted every five years in partnership with the Canton Public Library to identify park, recreation, and library needs of Canton residents. The statistically valid survey is a requirement of accreditation and to apply for many alternate funding, alternative funding opportunities. Based on the results of the RFP process, Canton Leisure Services requesting board authorization to enter into an agreement with Cobalt Community Research to complete the 2019 Community Needs Assessment at a cost not to exceed $30,000. Of this $30,000, the library has agreed to fund $10,000, leaving the remaining balance of $20,000 to come from the 2019 budgeted general fund. And we have Director Owenberger, as well as Library Director Eva Davis with us this evening if the board has any questions. We've seen this, yeah, this group's seen this before. No, not everybody has, but.
No, it was five years ago, right?
Five years ago, so it was the last time we've done it.
It will take 90 days. Starting when?
We're going to start meeting next week for this process.
Oh, and what methods will be used to reach people?
There's going to be primarily mail and internet surveys, so you'll receive a hard copy in the mail, and then it'll also have a unique code that you can go to to fill out the survey.
Online.
On the, online, thank you. So, if needed, they would do some phone, but they've found over the years that that has become less and less likely to get response as people now can see every phone number that's calling in, you know, and just answer the phone if you don't know the phone number, so that's become less helpful. So it's mainly mail and internet.
So would it be done also, maybe mentioned in the focus?
Yes.
On the library, because I know the library has a lot of social media also. Okay.
Other questions? Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Second motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award the 2019 Community Needs Assessment contract to Cobalt Community Research.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, guys. Item G2. G1, back to G1, which is, consider authorization of township supervisor to sign the long awaited termination agreement and sharing agreement, which permanently terminates sanitary sewer services with Wayne County. And we have with us this evening Aaron Sprague from Watuwa, who has been working diligently on this for, how long have we known each other?
Long. Too long. Not knowing each other, but working on this too long.
Yeah, absolutely. This goes back to basically the foundation of Watuwa in the early days with predecessors both Yak and Phil the Joy, and this finally completes a major, significant, and momentous event that is being memorialized with this document. So that being said, let me see, let me actually read a brief summary here. In terms of the background, G1 is what we're.
Yeah, did Michael, I did guess it. Okay.
Yeah, he read the first motion, or did you? No, should we do that? Let's do that.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the township supervisor to sign the termination agreement and sharing agreement with Wayne County. The amended pages have been handed out to the trustees, and there are copies in the back.
Support. How in terms of the background? For the past 30 years, Watuwa has been splitting sanitary sewer flow and diverting portions of both Wayne County to the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority, also known as Yucca. Flows gradually increased to Yucca over the years as the system improvements were completed with the final goal of sending all flows to Yucca. In 2017, the Watuwa and Yucca systems finally completed the necessary improvements to cease sanitary flows, flow of service to Wayne County. The diversion of the flow to what Yucca provides a much more stable rate structure for our community, and thus has resulted in annual savings so far of $3 million per year. Completion of the termination agreement and the associated sharing agreement will memorialize the termination of Watuwa's participation in Wayne County's system. There is one more necessary improvement required at Watuwa to manage future growth flows from all the member communities. This system improvement will require the addition of more sanitary storage at their site. These improvements are currently being designed with an anticipated construction date in 2020, and Canton Share this improvement has already been prefunded and is included in our recent water and sewer rates. So that's a little more detail in the background. Obviously, Aaron's here to answer any questions that any of the trustees may have.
Have the other members of Watuwa signed off?
Yes, WTUA, the WTUA board passed it in June, at our June 26 meeting. Plymouth Township passed it on July 23, and Northville Township passed it on the 25th, I believe. I won't speak a whole lot about it, maybe I'll just touch on some highlights. With this termination agreement, as Supervisor Williams stated, it's been a long time coming. WTUA was originally founded with the goal of getting out of the Wayne County system. That was back in the mid-'80s. At the time, Canton was a much more rural community, a lot of development has happened since then, and that development, and the development in the other communities delayed the authority's ability to terminate that contract. But we did cease flow to Wayne County in 2017. We've been negotiating this deal with Wayne County for at least two years, because it's Wayne County. When this was presented to the Canton Board a number of years ago, I believe it was in 2015 or '16, I projected an annual savings of $3 million. I later increased that to $3 to $4 million. In our first year, we saved almost $6 million, so we've actually exceeded the savings expectations. This agreement, there are some highlights. We will cease, we already have, but it recognizes our termination of flow to Wayne County. It very closely mirrors the language in the swap agreement that was signed between the City of Plymouth, Plymouth Township and Canton Township, I believe that was two months ago, where there's a certain portion of Canton Township that will continue to be serviced by Wayne County, and there's a certain portion of the City of Plymouth that will be serviced by WTUA. The agreements are very closely mirrored intentionally. Canton will remain responsible for the character of flow from Canton Township areas, whereas the county and the City of Plymouth become responsible for the quantity of flow. If there's a violation, it's still Canton Township that is responsible for enforcing that, rather than City of Plymouth going into Canton Township and trying to enforce a sewer use ordinance or that type of thing. WTUA is assigning, and the county approves that assignment, of 11 CFS cubic feet per second of flow to the City of Plymouth. WTUA will be paying 1.34 million, 1 point, just over 1.3 million dollars to Wayne County for some outstanding debt that the county has issued for their sanitary sewer system that WTUA, at least in the county's opinion, is responsible for, even though we're leaving the system. However, that 1.34 is more than made up for by the transfer of the capacity to the City of Plymouth. We will fully recoup that 1 point, in excess of that 1.3, 1.4 million dollars from the City of Plymouth. So it ends up being a, not net zero, slightly net positive for WTUA and for its member communities. We will be making a one-time payment of $99,000 upon the execution of the agreement. We have that money also in hand already. We've been saving it, knowing this day would be coming, so we won't be invoicing the townships for that. And we will be recouping that $99,000 from the City of Plymouth in their first two payments to us, per the sharing agreement that's also attached. I believe that the clerk did point out that I've passed out an amended page two. It's a very small amendment. It adds the words "and" 197 to the city flow swap area definition. It's just a nomenclature issue that the county pointed out. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Emery, go ahead.
So I think, I think the agreement is great. You did talk, I just want to ask like a side question, because I've heard, I heard it today on a podcast, and it talks about you made some necessary improvements. They were talking about with the heavy rain flows that we've had, the heavy rainfalls, some of our sewer systems throughout the state are overflowing into the rivers because the sewer system is combining with the river. Do these improvements stop anything like that from happening, or is it?
Well, unfortunately, that's not a new issue. It's maybe more newly publicized, but it's been a longstanding issue. Actually, Wayne County itself and many of the communities that are part of the Wayne County interceptor system have been under abatement orders for in excess of 30 years from the DEQ for exactly that type of occurrence. WTUA and our member communities, I always hate to say this kind of thing, but we've been very lucky. The infrastructure that we constructed in the '80s and '90s has greatly reduced any impact that we have on the environment or on homeowners, as far as basement backups, because that's another frequent occurrence in many other communities. WTUA also constructed in the early 2000s, not something that we want to use, but an emergency system for discharging to the river in the event that the really big storm occurs. It's something we're allowed to construct and we're not allowed to use. It's been used on two occasions, and I think really the way to think about it is, everything is designed for something. You know, you design a car maybe to go 80 miles per hour. If you try to go 100 miles per hour, bad things happen. You design a sewer system to handle a certain amount of flow, there's always a chance that a bigger amount of flow will occur. And so it's a possibility. As I said, WTUA has had that happen twice in the almost 30 years.
When was the last time that happened?
It was 2018 was the last time. Prior to that, it was 2011, I believe. The 2011 event had some ancillary conditions. YCOA was undergoing construction to their headworks where our flow goes, so we had to shut down for the day and store during the day, and before we were able to drain again, the big rain came in. So that one was, neither one has been found by DEQ to be a violation. The spring 2018 event was just a massive, massive amount of wet weather.
About now with how the extreme rainfalls we're having quickly.
We, as I said, you can never design a system to never have that happen. There just isn't enough money to do that. Actually, in my former career as a consultant, it wasn't my client, but Midland was a client of a friend of mine, and they were, had just gone through a big basement flooding episode, and so the work group got together and they said, "We want to make sure this never happens again." And so the engineer said, "Okay, well, we can design it to a 100-year storm. The state requires a 25-year storm." Said, "We can design it to a 100-year storm." Well, how much is that going to cost? And I don't remember what the number was, but it was $400 million. Whereas the 25-year storm is $10 or $12 million. It's, as you increase the sizing, it's in exponential growth to the cost. We are, we are in very good shape. We are designed to the 25-year, 24-hour storm, which is what the state holds communities to. And we do plan on constructing another 3 million gallons of storage. Really, that's for growth, but had we had that 3 million gallons of storage a year ago, we would have been fine.
Steve?
That, I was going to ask about that storage. I read it in the budget on the other action item, I think, and it said that it was already built into the rates we won't have to earn, won't have to add.
Correct. The, I guess there are a couple factors that play into that. Number one, the projected payout, payback period for the construction is two years, less than three years. So we expect to save enough money by not sending flow to Wayne County to pay for it within two to three years. In addition, we've already been saving some of that money for the past two years. And on top of that, WTUA historically had two bond issues, and one of those has been retired as of this year, so that is another source, source of, another expense that we had that is off the books, so.
That leads me to my second question, and I know our finance director isn't here tonight, but maybe, Pat, you know this, but, so I remember four years ago when we were discussing this, there was a payback period before we would actually start seeing the savings. So you mentioned $5 million, but is that something that we are passing along now to our water customer, water sewer customers, or is that going to see further effect of reducing rates?
We have been benefiting from ensuing in the residents' rates already.
Already? Okay.
Will we see continued? It depends on how quickly we pay back and the other costs drop off the.
Yeah, the payback was.
Books in terms of the interest expense on the retiring bonds, so there's some good, more good news coming.
Okay. Good.
I'll take it into.
I think the answer is yes and yes.
Okay, so we've seen some effect.
Benefit, you can expect more.
Expect more.
Committing today what we're going to do next April, I don't want to do, right? You have to be cautious there.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not predicting anything, because the water side may spike or whatever from the sewer and all that. I just was wondering if the effects are fully seen yet.
Residents are already seeing some benefit, and hopefully they'll continue to see additional. We'll see where the numbers pan out. Okay? Michael?
I have a question about the, so that $99,000 payment that we negotiated to, I guess, is like a severance payment, that was listed in the agreement as, I think like a debt balance? Is that for paying down debt, or are we treating that as debt, or?
Actually, part of the reason that the negotiations have taken so long is we don't, we didn't necessarily agree that that was debt that we owed, so we continue to refer to it as an alleged debt. That being said, we also had the capacity in the county system that we were interested in assigning, liquidating, getting compensation for. So that was really part of the agreement, is we agreed to pay that alleged share of debt, and in return, they agreed to approve our, they don't like the term sale of capacity, assignment of capacity with compensation.
Very intricate negotiation.
Yes.
And he just hit the two major points on what it took to get her done.
And really, the reason for the $99,000 payment is, we were really close to having this agreement ready a year ago, but we had, we needed to do those other two ancillary agreements, the Northville City, Northville Township Agreement, and the City of Plymouth, Plymouth Township, Canton Township Agreement. So that extended it out some. So the county's position was that in the interim year, they made WTUA's payments on that debt, and so they need the money when this is executed to recoup that, make themselves whole.
Ask, I see the language, so we would be paying, or Watuwa would be paying the $99,000, and it looks like the City of Plymouth would be paying back $95,826.92 at minimum, right? Where'd that number come from? Just curious.
The, WTUA will pay to the county the $95,000, whatever it is, at a minimum annually. That $95,000 was derived purely from the balance of 1.344750 divided by 14. We're paying it off over 14 years. We'll actually be receiving from the City of Plymouth $157,000. So the first two years, we will pay the county the $99,500 and recoup our $99,000. In subsequent years, we'll forward the whole $157,000 to the county in order to pay down that debt balance faster.
Okay.
Is no vice still in the mix, or not at all?
Uh, no.
What other tricks do you have up your sleeve to save money?
I think I'm all out. I think if, it's looking back, but if you look back at our budget from 16, 17, our budget was over $15 million, and it's now just over $11 million. So in two years, we've shaved roughly a third off the budget, primarily due to this termination.
Talking about the sewer, what about the water? Is that a separate issue?
It's a separate issue. It's something that we are exploring. I think we're still at the exploratory stage. We did look into the possibility of a WTUA water authority between Plymouth, Canton, and Northville Townships. The numbers looked favorable. One of the communities was not interested at that time and tabled it for a year, so we're currently exploring other options for partners. GLWA.
I was just going to add, Westland would love to get involved with us, as well as Livonia. Tomorrow, they'd like to sign up.
One of the, it's not a hard requirement, I guess, but it's a requirement that GLWA has that this type of authority be contiguous. And so we have Canton, and we have Northville, got Plymouth in between separating them. So what we're looking at is possibly adding a Livonia to give us some semblance of contiguity. It's not as easy a solution, because we already have the WTUA authority with these three communities. And also, really, the source of savings is storage, and you're trying to eliminate your, or reduce your peak hour demand, and Canton has certain portions that are, the water tower is very, has been very good at controlling most of the township, but there are still portions of the township that aren't controlled by that water tower. Northville is in a similar situation. Plymouth would have worked well, because they have, at least according to the engineer that did the study, excess storage. Plymouth Township doesn't agree that they have excess storage. Livonia doesn't have any storage, so that, going that route will likely require an investment in capital for additional storage, but it looks like there's still significant savings to be had with a reasonable payback period.
I did not think we were going to go this deep, which is all great, we're doing it. It's fine. This is good information for all the board. I know you met Jade now, right?
Yes.
He sat down with you. I would like you to go deeper with him in terms of tower capacity for the western side of the community, because that is a future investment that maybe not in the next year or two, but at some point Canton's going to have to tackle. But that is, one of the reservations out of Plymouth Township is the fact that, you know, we don't have the capacity that they would dump back to them, and so please make that a priority to go through.
Absolutely.
I think you're doing a tremendous job. I've known you over the last 11 years, and I've always been impressed with your knowledge and how you handle this, and not only how you handle it now, but how you're, you're looking beyond, outside the box, is that the term we use? And I appreciate your efforts. You do, you do a good job. You do a good job.
I think I have to thank you as well. We succeed because of the support of the communities. We have a certain level of funding that's required, and the communities have never balked at making the necessary contributions to our system that end up paying off in the long run.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, especially for the people at home. I think it's really important to acknowledge the fact that kind of long-term planning played a role here. Not every community has people, not every authority has people who are looking at the overall system and then, and rising costs, and saying, "What can we do about this?" Going down the line. I know the last reduction in the sewer water rate was, I think, on the back. was, I think, on the back of the sewer, of the, of the drop in our cost of sewage. And that is directly tied to going to the YCUA or the. So I'm definitely in favor of this termination agreement. I think it's a good sign. And, and I think that previous boards and, and officials can, can pat themselves on the back for being good stewards of the public resources.
No further comment? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item G2, consider change order to the existing contract with Northwest Consultants, Inc. for the final design changes and bidding assistance for the Ridge Road paving project.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a change order to the existing contract with Northwest Consultants, Incorporated for the Ridge Road project in the amount of $43,580.
Support.
Closer, Canton Township plans to publicly bid Ridge Road Ford Award paving project for fall of 2019. The final design is being completed and the right-of-way acquisition is proceeding as we speak. Our consultant, Northwest Consultants, is moving towards final design. And this change order requests covers the final design changes and some additional work for the right-of-way and the bidding of the project to get it done. Are there any board questions?
So I don't get surprised. This includes the entire road, not 900 feet of gravel in the middle?
Yeah, this is end to end.
End to end, okay. All right. Looking forward to it starting.
What's that?
Looking forward to it starting. When will it start, next year? Is that what we're?
Thinking because of the delay to get us to this point, they'll go out for bid, follow the timing, get it back, and then start working. They may start doing some water stuff at Hanford. Is it Hanford that runs through there, a guide?
Yeah.
They start some of that this fall, but the, the meat of it's gonna be next year. Let's see, no further questions? Those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3, proposal, consider change order for the existing contract with Spalding-Dedecker Associates for the residential local road program for 2019, improvement program, and increasing existing purchase order number 2018-3245.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a change order to the existing contract with Spalding-Dedecker for the 2019 local road projects in the amount of $16,040 and increase existing purchase order number 2018-3245 by $16,040.
Support.
Canton Township has started the unmatched residential local road program under the Roads Millage. The project was awarded Great Lakes Contracting earlier this year. Our engineer, Spalding-Dedecker, is providing all inspection and testing for the project. Canton Township solicited the costs from SDA to conduct additional concrete and material testing that was not part of their original scope. And this proposal is, the proposal is attached here. Are there any board questions? Clean up, okay. Seeing none, those in favor of the board, or the motion as presented, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Item G4. Mike, you slow me down if we've got more than one here. But the G4, consider award contract for suburban calcium chloride sales for the 2019 dust control program for the local gravel roads.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract to suburban calcium chloride sales of Taylor, Michigan, to provide Canton's 2019 dust control program on local gravel roads for an amount not to exceed $17,500.
Support.
I'm not gonna read through the detail here, but it tells us how much per gallon and how many gallons we're buying. This is basically, was a guide, Ridge, and a couple others that we have to keep the dust controlled on. Once we pave Ridge, this'll, cost will be significantly reduced. Are there any board questions? Yes.
Does this consider, I mean, we had eleven. Eleven dirt roads, is this all of them then, or just certain ones?
We, we will respond to anybody in 2012, not long enough. But we also are using it at our own facilities where there's dirt, which is not much.
So it's not automatically done in all the roads they'd have to ask?
It's county's responsibility still. So this is just picking up where the county's dropping the ball. Seeing no further question, those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item G5. Yep. Thank you. Let's see, there's another motion on G4 or?
G6?
G5, oh, thank you, yes. Pressure Slavens is correct. Thank you very much. G6, consider approval for the emergency replacement of roof decking at the summit on the park.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the waiving of the formal bid process for the emergency replacement of roof decking at the summit on the park and authorize an emergency purchase order for the emergency replacement of roof decking at the summit on the park to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC at 18786 Lou Susanna in Livonia, Michigan, 48152 in the amount of $37,000 to be paid from account number listed for capital outlay building and improvements.
Support.
Background, the copper roof over the aquatic center at the summit on the park is the original to the building. Approximately 10 years ago, the roof began to leak in a variety of spots. After learning that the original contractor for the installation of roof was no longer in business and realizing that the roof had maybe not been installed correctly the first time, spot repairs were made continuously over the last 10 years. Recently, pieces of rust have fallen into the metal roof deck as the moisture has caused extensive rusting deterioration. An emergency repair was made at the point of the leak. However, it was learned at that time that there are considerable areas of deterioration in metal decking and it's imperative that the repairs be made. It's anticipated that the repairs will be made during the summit shutdown. And we've got Director Holenberger here to answer any additional questions. Board may have.
With these repairs, how much life it'll give, it'll give the roof?
This really won't extend the life of the roof. It's not on the exterior. It's on the interior portion where there's the metal decking and then several layers of moisture barrier and insulation, and then the copper roof on top of that. So this is the interior portion of that. This, this should last for, for a while, but we'll probably end up having to replace the entire roof prior to any issues with this. So we're constantly trying to find root sort, root causes of the moisture that's penetrating from the improper insulation when the summit was built. But every time we find a problem, we find another problem. So it's, I would anticipate in the next few years, we'll have to replace the entire roof.
One been injured or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Are they looking at ventilating? I mean, you said you're looking for root causes. Is there any way to help this, like creating extra vents or?
We do, the air handling units do, do pump in and out a lot of fresh air. It's just because of the humidity. It's not so much the humidity inside, it's the moisture coming in from the, penetrating from the outside coming in.
Total cost of roof replacement included in the capital improvement plan?
Yes.
Those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And it was again, one item, right, or one? Two, two, item G7, consider approval for contract for playground design consulting.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize, the supervisor, to sign a contract for playground consulting services in accordance with proposal provided by MCSA Group, Incorporated at 529 Greenwood Avenue in southeast in East Grand Rapids, Michigan, 48506.
Support.
Again, we've got Director Holenberger here, but we did have a study session or we had some open public meetings showing some concept designs. From there, I believe Greg team selected. And now we're gonna move forward with the final design.
That's correct. So this would, this piece, the difference between this and the initial design, the initial design was concept and this is all the engineering and specing out specifically what piece of equipment for every portion of the project and building the bid documents for the actual purchase and construction of the park.
Great.
So MC, MC Smith is the one that you're, I'm looking at your contractors' names below.
Yes.
Does this include the new park also that we're looking at in the northeast?
Yes, this, that's what this is for.
Okay, it's not.
So, so what we're doing, the, the two separate motions. One is to approve them to become basically our go-to company that we would utilize for any time we need playground design work. For example, we're looking, we have CDBG funds to put in a, a we-go round, which is a handicap accessible merry-go-round in Heritage Park. So they could do that job for us without bringing it back to the board unless it was other, over $10,000. And then the second motion is to authorize the, doing them, the purchase order specifically for the Northeast Pocket Park.
Yes, Steve?
Um, just from my own recollection, I don't remember the maps. I was on the rail, the 275 trail over there. And the new apartments are pretty much done, it seems like. Where is the park going in relation to those apartments?
It'll be right at the entrance. If you're entering, it would be on your right side. So it would be the southeast corner of the property.
Coming in off Copernick on your right-hand side.
Correct.
Okay, so when you turn, you turn left, if you're going east, you turn left into the apartment complex?
Correct.
And it's on your right side?
It'll be immediately on your right. There'll be five, I think, four or five designated parking areas specifically for that. And then the park would be right there.
Okay, thanks.
Motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Second motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount of $26,790 for MCSA Group, Incorporated at 529 Greenwood Avenue, southeast, East Grand Rapids, Michigan, 48506 to provide design and construct.
Support.
Administration service for a new park playground at Copernick Road. The funds are to be taken from the capital outlay building and improvements fund.
Now, support.
Favor of the second motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G8, consider acceptance of Masco Corporation Lead Like a Girl sponsorship of $10,000 and consider approval of the related budget adjustments to complete this transaction.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to accept the sponsorship from the Masco Corporation for the Block Youth and Teen Center to implement the leadership initiative, lead hashtag like a girl in the amount of $3,500 to be taken from the account number listed and moved to the other account number listed.
And for the second year in a row, Canton Leisure Services and Block Youth and Teen Center were offered a $10,000 sponsorship from Masco Corporation for the 2019-2020 school year to support the implementation of the Lead Like a Girl program. We are recommending that the board accept the sponsorship and increase both the revenue and expenses by $3,500 for the 2019 budget and $6,500 for the transfer into 2020 budget. And Greg, again, thank Laura Mortier for her efforts in bringing this to fruition. It's amazing. And, yeah, please.
One other comment. Anne Marie and Summer and I were fortunate enough to go and visit with the girls, Lead Like a Girl, and go to their graduation. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. And I have to commend Laura. She does a wonderful job with that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great program. And so is the other one also.
Be a Model Man, thank you.
Be a Model Man.
All right, in terms of the public audience that's listening tonight, the girls tend to do well in their fundraising, the boys not so well. So if there's anybody out there in the community that would like to help support the Be a Model Man program, we'd love to have you support that program. It's also a great program. Thank you. A little public service announcement. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the second motion?
Yes. Mr. Supervisor, I further move to approve the following budget amendments. Increase revenues to the donations account in the amount of $3,500 and increase expenses to the operating supplies account in the amount of $3,500.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G9, consider approval of budget amendment and bidding assistance for fleet services roof replacement.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendments. Increase expense to the capital outlay building improvements account of $7,400 and then increase in revenue to the fund balance appropriation account in the amount of $7,400.
Support.
Background, Fleet Services Building is an 8,000-square-foot building that was built in 2000. Since its construction, the high-slope roof has had numerous wind-caused damage events. Roof in the building is original and after thorough condition assessment, has been determined that the need for replacement. Roofing Technology Associates is the roof consulting and design services contractor for the township. To that end, a quote was provided for re-roofing specifications and bidding assistance for this building. Are there any board questions?
How is this less than my house's roof? That's a good.
This is just the design.
Oh, okay.
That's how.
It's not gonna be less, that's what I'm assuming. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Fuck with roofs.
Yeah, it's our roofs.
Yes.
Okay, those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that's a single motion, yes. Okay, G10.
Eleven.
G11, thank you. Consider approving the donation of 60-foot right-of-way to the Wayne County.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the donation of 60 feet of right-of-way land at 41454 and 41600 Warren Roads to Wayne County in exchange for the elimination of permit and plan review fees associated with the construction of the new fire station number two. In addition, approve a township official to sign the Wayne County documentation form.
Support.
Good. The motion basically explains what we're doing as we're giving up some right-of-way to expedite or move along the completion of the rebuild of Fire Station 2. Are there any board questions? We have Josh and Mr. Chris Stackline with us this evening to answer any questions the board may have.
I guess I'll ask just to explain the right-of-way and what, what it's being used for.
So the right-of-way is the section of, I guess, property between the Warren Avenue and, and what would normally be a sidewalk. In that case, we've already donated the right-of-way for where Fire Station number two currently sits. What we're doing in this case is, is providing the right-of-way for the property to the east and the property to the west. And that's essentially so that if, if they ever have a need to expand Warren Road, it'll allow the county to do that without having to go get permissions and do the things that, it really doesn't affect us, the property or the build in any form or fashion, so.
So we were already, if I may, Mr. Supervisor, we were already accommodating that we would, that 60 feet on our side of the, of the, of the dividing line in the build design?
You mean, when we have the station built in? Yes, that right-of-way was already planned into that. And this'll include all of the planning for when the driveway approaches and all that stuff too?
Great.
That's the grassy area, correct? I mean, it's gonna be grass even after the build?
It will be grassy in the future. It's just the, where the driveway approaches come in, just like in a subdivision, the area between the sidewalk and the, you know, the street. So consider that, but just a little bit wider for the fire station there.
We would still maintain it then? Okay.
Questions, those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G12. Consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article 4 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to update the fireworks ordinance to comply with the changes, recent changes to state law.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 46, Article 4 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Support.
This is a, a restart of a first reading. We had some language errors in the original request for the first. That's why you're all recognizing this?
Yeah, I'm like, didn't we do this before the Fourth of July?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And with that, there was a language error discovered And with that, there was a language error discovered and it's been since corrected. So this is now an official first reading again, start the process again. I don't expect any questions, but if there are any, happy to entertain, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for August 27, 2019.
Those in favor of the second motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Got item G13, which is actually a carry-on, follow-on to the last one. Consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article Eight, Canton Code of Ordinances, update the ordinance prohibiting minors from using alternate nicotine products to comply with the changes to state law.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 46, Article Four of the Canton. We've got a copy and paste error. Mr., okay, I just caught that because that was the identical, or, all right. Mr. Supervisor, I move that the, let me start from scratch here, we'll just look at the actual ordinance. I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends, uh, chapter?
The attachment is Article Eight.
Forty-six, Article Eight of the Canton Code of Ordinances. Entitled offenses involving underage persons.
Board?
Again, self-explanatory. Are there any questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe that concludes our formal agenda this evening. Yes?
Oh, yeah.
Second motion, please.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for August 27, 2019.
Second. Those in favor of the second motion is presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Time again the agenda for any public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? Would anybody, yes, sir. What I'd ask you to do, Mr. Supervisor, is if you'd approach the podium, so the folks at home can hear you, number one, and I would ask that you identify, tell us your name and address, it's not required, but we'd like to have it for the record. And then if you would limit any discussion to three minutes, or presentation to three minutes.
Of course, it's more, my name is Greg Stackher, I live at 720 Sandalwood Court, been a resident of Canton for close to 40 years now. My question is, you were doing a budgetary process this evening, has there been a forecast of the additional revenues to be derived from the tax receipts from all the new building in Canton?
Baked into all the scenarios and projections that we're making, in addition to five-year projections that we're in the process of trying to do for the public.
So where would, where would a citizen find that forecasting?
Oh, now I'll get you the details.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, call for motion to adjourn, or, yes, before we adjourn, is there any trustee comment?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we have, it's GFL and Republic here to talk about recycling. I mean, we've been waiting for eight months, so we'd like to find out basically with GFL and Republic, a definite decision or comment on what they're doing with recycling, and even having Michigan Coalition of Recycling, they're really good, they know the markets, you know, have them come do a presentation on what's happening in there and happening in the state and have GFL and Republic here, because we've been waiting since January.
Apologize if the board is not fully aware of the Conference of Western Wayne, of which I've been the chairman of the recycling committee for the last five months, driving the bus on this thing. We had a meeting yesterday? Yeah, yesterday with GFL again, out in Northville Township, Supervisor Nixon, myself, basically demanding that they put in writing what we've been asking for, which is very simply put, where's their market still locally? Define it for us, so then we, all of the Western Wayne communities can together combine, not only for grant opportunities, but education pieces for the citizens. So, it's coming. I wish too that it was in our hands already. The meeting was at moments tense. Nobody was shy in terms of the conversation, but also, GFL is in the process of redefining itself. Specifically, Republic is no longer the Murph that's being used for our materials. GFL has internalized all that, which I don't know if the board is or is not aware of it. And so, they are doing many things that they believe will prepare GFL as our vendor for many years to come, but they're in the, literally in the middle of negotiations and discussions with their different partners, and they tell us it's going to be at least three months until they're in a position to communicate that to us. But the short-term interim is, tell us today where the markets are today and we will educate the communities. So that's the current status.
Right, is there a reason we can't have a study session now and at least do that? Have the Michigan Coalition for Recycling come in?
RSS, and there's been several subject matter experts have been coming and presenting to the Conference of Western Wayne. When there is information of value to share, then we will have the study session. I, I don't, would like, prefer not to have a study session where the entities are not prepared to have a conversation honestly with us. I don't think that would be value add for us. So we can discuss it further, maybe offline, and, and what I would like you to do is Bob Belair will be leading this for us, and we now have Jade as well. If you could, send a note to myself and Jade, or directly to Jade, and just CC me with what your concerns are and how quickly you'd like to see things done, and I will make sure that staff is very much aware of what you're requesting. Okay?
Go ahead, Michael.
So, I just, I've got some concerns about this as well, I just want to jump in. And part of it is, is a little bit about the transparency end of it, because we did raise the rates on residents for recycling. I know we approved, well, the, you know, the previous board raised the rates on recycling in 2016. We awarded them a fairly lucrative contract, we went to automated recycling. Part of the rationale behind that was to prolong the life of the landfill. What we haven't received is a good indicator that we are achieving those goals, that people are, if they're paying more money now and we've, and we've invested in increased capital to have automated recycling, is are we recycling more? I've read reports in the news of other municipalities sending their, their recycling directly to the landfill. I have concerns that we are doing that. I would love to be able to get them in front of us and ask them if A, we are, and B, how much we are, because I think we owe it to the residents at least, you know. And, and that's with all due respect to the Conference of Western Wayne, but that's not, they don't represent the residents of Canton Township. We were elected to resident, elected residents of Canton Township.
It would be absolutely naive to assume with the Chinese markets imploding, that more material is not going into the landfill. It is, it's absolutely going into the landfills. There is zero market for glass today. So, to that end, we are paying, right now, people additional costs, go through our recycling bins, to turn around and put it in the landfill already. So if we can do something to control those costs, be in terms of education and being honest with the residents, if there's no market for glass, GFL, put that in writing. We'll re-educate the community and we'll stop wasting money moving glass from one bin into another bin and still going to the landfill anyways. And, and the glass one's an easy one to understand. It costs more to haul it to a glass recycling facility that will recycle it than the sand itself. So it's irrational to, to pay a premium cost to sunglass to somebody who is not going to pay you extra for that.
I think that's the kind of thing that we need to understand as a community and...
And at the end of the day, you know, GFL's internal business workings is their business. They have a service contract, I think, I mean, they have attorneys, I imagine, they're smart and they know what they're doing, but I would love to have that discussion in public so that I know and on behalf, the public knows, are they getting the services that they're paying for? And if they're not, we need to talk about, A, what that looks like going forward, or B, you know.
Well, we all, the board is fully aware of the fact that, that GFL came in and asked for an increase.
Yeah.
Everybody understands that. They're no longer asking for that increase. So that...
But even, I mean, the thing, like Michael said, though, I mean, giving them three months, they know what they're doing now, and that's what we want to know, is what they're doing now, giving them three more months.
They're in the process of negotiating agreements with external sources, and I'm no means defending GFL. What I'm doing is I'm making you aware of what's there. So if we, if the board's desire is, let's go ahead and get that done right away, and to have GFL come in and sit here for an hour to tell us, can't tell you about it, can't talk about it right now, can't talk about it right now, I think is a waste of our time, but I'd be more than happy to schedule that if that's what the board wants.
I mean, they should have, they should know how much money they're, they should know how much tonnage they're sending to the landfill.
Oh, yes.
That's a simple question I need to know the answer to. I mean...
Well, that's an email to Paul Densky, you know, to myself or to Bob Belair, we can get you those answers easily.
When they first asked for the rate increase, we reached out and asked for that number, we never got that back, and we were told that, that no truck had been sent away from the recycling facility. I saw in an email that not, that that, that that, that no truck had been sent away from the recycling center, and now I have reason to question whether or not that is still the case.
It's going to recycling center, and then it's going, going into the back of another truck going back to the landfill.
Right, because Republic, wasn't Republic, didn't they say something like, we're selling it to the markets, but we know there's no markets?
Where there is still a strong market today, and this is, will be part of the, the education, the communication piece when they finally comes out, is clean cardboard and paper, strong markets. Glass, no market. Plastics, I think, one, two, strong markets, the rest of the plastics, no market. So, it's been shared verbally, I'm asking to put it in writing.
Well, and if we're going to be charging a fee to the residents, we need to make sure that we're getting the ser, I mean, we test the concrete that we're putting in for the roads right now, and because, and we know the quality of those roads, we know what we're getting, we can drive on it. What we don't know right now is the value. Cycling services that we entered into a contract and are paying a good amount of money for.
Very valid points, and additionally, the most important thing in this entire conversation that I want the board to fully understand, is the longer we can extend the life of our landfill in Canton Township where we pay no tipping fees, right?
Right.
Win for the residents. The day that turkey gets filled up, we are now paying, and residents don't understand, they're paying under market value today. The day we have to pay tipping fees and hauling costs to another community, there's going to be some significant sticker shock to all of our residents. So, to your points that you're all making, we want to maximize what is being recycled every day.
So what I'm hearing is, it sounds like everybody wants a study session, which I agree, which would be good for the residents too, so we all have a clear understanding of...
The request, the request from yesterday with GFL was, we're not going to have answers for three months, I'm going to tell them, you know, whenever the first day I can get Amy to get it on the calendar, if it's early September, so be it, we'll do it.
Right. Right.
Walk away with what we get, walk away with.
It was two months before, and it was three months, and we've been doing that, pushing it down the road, or letting them push it down the road.
Other things that you have to, okay, yeah, I'm not going to defend GFL, let GFL defend GFL. The other thing is, through the fact that we are paying below market the day we go out for bid, if we, you know, if we choose to do that...
Oh, yeah.
Price of poker's going to go up, so let's not be naive.
Right, but there are other models as well. I mean, South Oakland has Sakura, right? They have a municipal recycling center that multiple communities have come together because they didn't want to be subject to the market whims of a independent contractor. Now, that's something, is an option we should probably talk about if our contractor's not going to be performing, but we can't even have that strategic discussion if we can't get them in front of us.
There is, and that's the long-term solution, and then there is interest regionally to do something like that through Conference of Western Wayne today.
There are some conversations or even presentations that come out of those meetings that you have, just having the knowledge of understanding where what you're hearing is helpful.
Share with the full board every meeting that was occurred, the meeting minutes and recaps.
Okay, that'd be helpful.
That Michigan Recycling Coalition, if they could do a presentation that day also, they're really good at understanding the different models out there and they can help us. I heard them when I was in that one meeting, so I think I'd like to hear them here also.
Go to Ann Arbor?
No, that was the one that was here, it was here about four months ago.
Additional board comments?
Last guy who ran this meeting got it done in 18 minutes, and I think I remember a standing ovation at the end of it, so, I mean, that's my recollection.
No further questions? F, we're good? Thank you. Call for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night all, be safe.